Okay, so we're good to go. Liz, great. Thank you. And I will just get started. Good evening. Welcome to the September 22 special North Hampton School Committee meeting. I am Gina Louie Shara and I'm the Chair of the School Committee and I will be presiding. This meeting is being held remotely on Zoom pursuant to the modification of the state's open meeting law for the COVID-19 pandemic. This meeting and all participating on Zoom will be audio and video recorded. Excuse me. I will begin by asking the clerk to please call the role of the school committee.
Mayor Shara?
Present.
Member Robbins? Well, sure, we have Member Robbins tonight.
Hold on.
We can't hear you, Member Robbins.
I just made Member Robbins a co-host.
Okay. Uh, Member Gacy? Here. Members, remember Seraphie Cox?
Present.
Member Stein?
Present.
Member Levy?
Present.
Member Miller?
Present.
Member Goldman? Hmm, not sure we have him going either yet. Uh, Member Agna?
Present.
And Member Davis? Member Davis, we don't have a member Davis yet. Okay, your honor, you have a quorum.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, this is a special meeting, uh, but one that includes public comments. So we will open it up to public comment. If you wish to make a comment, please use the raised hand feature in the bottom menu bar under reactions. If you're calling in by phone, you can raise your hand by hitting star nine. Before you begin, please state your name and your city or town for the public record. I'll set a three-minute timer to ensure everyone has an equal opportunity to speak. Um, and I ask that all but the school committee turn off your video until called upon because only the person recognized has the floor. So first up, I see Kate Fontaine.
Good evening, members of the school committee. Uh, my name is Kate Fontaine. I live in Wilbraham, Massachusetts, and I am a teacher at North Hampton High School, the Chair of the Social Studies Department, and I'm also the Unit A Coordinator for the North Hampton Association of School Employees. Um, I'm coming to speak to you tonight about the fair share amendment. And I first want to start by thanking you for passing, um, or for putting out a statement and support and passing a resolution about the passing of the fair share amendment. And I'm hoping to urge everybody to vote yes in order to support increasing funding for our schools and transportation, and also to invite the members of the North Hampton School Committee to join our union as we are working on getting out the vote for fair share and we will be doing a phone bank. We'd like to invite you to join us. Location to be announced, but it'll be on October 19th. And so if you're interested, um, you can reach out to us via email and we'd be love to have you join us. So thank you so much.
Great. Thank you so much for that. I am looking for any other hands for public comments. Can you give a little scroll through, everybody? Okay. Seeing no further hands for comment. We will move on from the public comment section and go to, um, the next item on the agenda, which is a, uh, vote to revise the school choice budget for 2023 and Dr. Pearson Campbell. He'll present that.
Thank you. I'd also like to invite, um, Ms. Bobby Jones, who's our business administrator. Uh, she did a presentation for today. So Ms. Bobby Jones, are you here?
I am.
Okay.
I, I don't have the documents on my computer, though, if you wanted to share the screen. If, um, somebody could do that, I don't know if you want the documents up or if everybody's comfortable looking at them in the folder that they received.
Um, Bobby, is there a particular one that you want to start with or that would be the best one to?
I don't even have to. I mean, you don't have to share them if, if they don't want to. I can just review what I did if everybody had a chance to look at them.
Okay, so everyone, I'm seeing some nods. Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so basically.
Bobby. I'm sorry, sorry. One second. Member Stein?
Uh, yeah, I, if we could look at them, that would be great. I, I didn't see them in the folder until, I don't know, four or so. So I only got to quickly look at them. So if we get, if we could have them up, that would be awesome. Just so I know which one you're talking about. Thanks.
Um, so Mayor, it might be best if you just put the, um, recap sheet, the summary sheet. And then they can refer later back to each of the, um, supporting documents that go with that. So the one that shows FY '24, FY '23, FY '22.
Okay, so this is not the projections?
Uh, no, it's.
So I've got projections, the FY '23 vote, the variance, FY '22 variance or 9222 PDF?
Uh, yeah, the PDF one.
They're all PDFs, Bobby. Sorry.
The 922.
Okay. Um, that has FY '24, '23, '22 is what you said. Okay, give me one. I will share that. Okay, everyone can see it? Yes. Great. Okay, go ahead, Bobby. Thanks.
Okay, so basically alls I did, um, was do a, like a little, um, summary recap. So for FY '24, um, this will be discussed further in the budget process. Um, but attached in your backup, you will also see the, um, school choice projection sheet, which Susan had shared with you previously. Um, and it just will show you kind of the shape that school choice is in and the fiscal clip that's, um, that's hitting. Um, so we will discuss that, you know, more in the future, but I did just want to attach that for now. Um, FY '23 is the, uh, one that I need to vote on. So, um, you previously voted 3,010,009 to, um, use school choice monies for FY '23. And then the contract settlement, actually, um, we needed to have an increase of 87,730. So that requires a vote by the school committee. Um, and again, that backup is attached in, in the, um, shared documents that just kind of breaks it down by the increase for ESPs, um, and then teacher salaries, health services, and tuitions. Um, and again, it's, it's basically just because the contract settled at more than we had initially budgeted for. Um, so the vote would be to increase the use of school choice funds by the amount of 87,730 for FY '23. Um, if you were so inclined. And then FY '22, um, Susan had also previously, uh, shared this with you, but I wanted to just kind of give a recap there. We, you had, as a, as a school committee had approved 2,887,009 for FY '22. And at the end of the fiscal year, we had only needed 2,281,930. So we had a variance of, um, 605079, which is actually a savings. Um, just to point that back out, that savings is reflected in the school choice projection, um, document that is in that folder as well.
Hey, Member Stein?
Um, I just have a question, uh, sort of about that too. Um, that is a very basic question, so I apologize. Um, if, um, it's obvious to others, but when you said it, I looked at that sort of projection sheet. So is that projection sheet? Basically, the amount of money net we're getting from the state for a school choice program for students that we have coming in versus going out. And like, I guess in this case, it would be plus like a variance. So is that typically what that projection is?
Right. So the projection would show you what we anticipate the beginning balance to be, what we anticipate for revenues, um, what we had actually voted for, for, um, and then projected out for 20, um, for what we would vote for, um, to use to support the budget, the general fund budget, and then that changed to the balance. Um, so it's, it's just showing that we keep using more than we're actually taking in. So we're going to end up with a, with a shortfall. And that at some point, we're going to have to make a change there. Um, or if we attract more school choice people, then perhaps the revenues would go up. And additionally, typically at the end of each year, we can often, you know, have some savings. Like if we did budget the full amount, we may not need that full amount. So that revenue goes back into. So the, the projection will change always, but that's a basic premise of it.
Great. Thank you. That, that's really helpful. Um, and I know we'll talk a lot more about this as we talk about like fiscal year '24 and stuff. Um, but, um, I just wanted to sort of understand that movement. So thank you.
You're very welcome.
Uh, Member Robbins?
Thank you. Um, so I'm also wondering about the projection and I guess I, I wasn't really thinking as close to 23 and we're only talking about 23 right now, but I know a lot of districts are backing out of school choice, um, thinking about really, um, because they're in the same bind we are where the revenues, um, the revenues really don't keep up with what the expenditures are. And I know we're going to have a deeper conversation about this in the future. Um, but I'm hoping that this vote doesn't put us back into a bind of making a decision about keeping school choice, um, at the levels that we have now and in the grades that we have now that would project towards a really long future. And I don't know enough about it to be able to be intelligent about it. And Bobby, I know you know a lot more.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't say that this particular vote for tonight would have, um, any reflection on the future decision. Um, that is really going to be a very, um, complicated, I think. I've been through it in my, um, district that I was in. Um, there's a lot to talk about when you consider whether or not to, um, be a school of choice school. Um, but for tonight's purposes, that, that wouldn't have an effect on your future decisions.
Okay, Member Agna?
I'd like to make a motion that the school committee increase the use of school choice funds for the FY '23 budget by $87,730.
Second.
Second.
Motion's been made by Member Agna and seconded by Member Seraphie Cox, I believe. Um, and Member Seraphie Cox.
Um, perhaps this is not, um, an easily answerable question tonight, and that's fine. It's mostly a question that I have for kind of the long term. Um, is, you know, um, I remember, uh, when, well, here, let me say my question first. Um, I'm wondering that, that sort of deficit that we are expecting if we continue to, uh, spend, uh, school choice money at the level that it's at now. Um, but so I'm wondering how much of that, like, how many positions are we talking about? Cause I know that there are specific positions that are covered by, uh, by those monies. And as I said, if, if you don't know those numbers right now, that's fine. But I think, you know, as we move forward in terms of especially the FY '24 budget, um, having that information, uh, would be really helpful.
Yeah, it will. And, and I will, I don't have them available tonight, but I certainly, um, will work on getting that done because there is a lot to take into consideration. For instance, um, even though we may cover a teacher's salary, it may not be because we increased the number of teachers, you know, sometimes they're scattered throughout the grades just enough to bring up the classroom size. Um, and you didn't actually need an extra teacher, but I don't know enough yet. I haven't been here yet long enough to, um, to really answer that, but it is something we will look in depth at for sure. um, to really answer that, but it is something we will look in depth at, for sure.
Member Levy?
Thanks. Just a quick follow-up question to member Seraphy Cox's question. Am I understanding the documents correctly that you shared with us? That the positions, the special ed ESPs and the regular ed ESPs that are, and then like the ESP salaries, the teacher salaries, all those salaries that are in there are what is covered by school choice? Because that strikes me as a lot of people.
Yeah, that is what's covered. That was what was originally approved, what we will actually need with the contract settlement and the variance. So yes, that is what we are covering with school choice.
Okay, thank you.
Member Stein?
Another follow-up question to my colleagues' good questions, um, as I think we all try to learn more about this. A- and it's sort of, I guess I'm wondering um about that tie between the school choice dollars and the costs incurred because of school choice. So you should have mentioned, like, you know, it may be that there's students coming in that are spread across the, like, so it's not actually like you're paying for it. And it seems to me, if I understand this correctly, like, this is one of the revolving accounts we're allowed to have. And so for whatever process, in the past, we've decided that we're going to target these sort of positions for whatever reason. Um, but essentially, it's just like, we're using this money to pay uh like real operation costs, like salary, wages. And we just seem to be attributing it this way because it's a revolving account. Like, I, I guess I'm trying to understand that piece. Um, and you know, I know we'll get way more into it as we look at the budget, but it seems sort of important to me to understand. Like, we say it's the school trace money and that's what's generating it, but then what choices have we made about what, how do we map that and strategically, like, based on these different budget buckets, right? So I, I don't know if you could say just something like briefly, like, high level about like those elements. I mean, I'd be totally wrong about what I just said too, so please, please correct me if I am.
No, no, you are right. Um, and like I say, I haven't been in the district long enough to really understand what their reasoning behind who they chose to pay from school choice or why. Um, but it is a revolving account where you can just, um s- you know, arbitrarily even select a number, say four hundred thousand or four million dollars that you're gonna pay um using school choice monies. And it might not be attributed directly to school choice children, so to speak. Um, but that, you know, I really, without looking at the, you know, who we are paying, the number of students we have in um, and whether or not they're actually, so if we took in school choice students and we had to increase a whole class, which means we have to hire a new teacher, then that becomes a cost of taking in school choice children. But if we have school choice students and they're sprinkled around, say, you know, seventh grade, ninth grade, eighth grade, twelfth grade, and they really only take a class size from, say, eighteen to twenty in various grades, then that's not actually an increased cost due to taking in school choice. So I don't know if that helped you.
Yeah, very much. Thank you.
Okay, member Robbins?
I'd like to make a friendly amendment um to the motion to vote on this and ask us to please place this on a not-so-future agenda to explore more deeply, and I think particularly pertaining to Bobby's recent comments. So thinking about a friendly amendment that says we'll put this on an agenda relatively soon.
Um, member Agna, you made the original motion, so do you accept that amendment?
Yeah, I, you know, I guess so. I don't know that we need to, because I think as Bobby just said, we're going to be discussing this in depth in our budget. So, I mean, I, it does feel like, yeah, we're going to do it. I, I don't know. Yeah, fine, let's just say it. It's not going to hurt anything, so.
Okay, is there any further discussion on this item? All right, seeing, uh, roll call, please, Annie?
Member Robbins?
Yes.
Member Gazy?
Yes.
Member Seraphy Cox?
Yes.
Member Stein?
Yes.
Member Levy?
Yes.
Member Miller?
Yes.
Do we have member Goldman yet?
No.
I think we, okay. Member Agna?
Yes.
And member Davis, I think it's on an open house. I think that's what you said, member Agna.
Yeah.
That is eight in favor.
Great, thank you. Um, and that moves us to item four, which is an update on the bomb threat incident that happened at uh North Hampton High School on September thirteenth. And Dr. Pearson Campbell?
Hello, I want to share my screen first. Okay, can everybody see my screen? Annie, can you see my screen?
Yeah, we can see it.
Okay, thank you, I just want to make sure. Good evening, everyone. My name is Janelle Pearson Campbell. I am the interim superintendent of North Hampton Public Schools, and today we'll review the high school incident and safety protocols. Review of the incident on September thirteenth, twenty twenty-two. The high school administration superintendent was notified of a potential threat at two P M was based on statements made in a group text exchanged involving some students. Nine-one-one was called. The district assisting policies required a nine-one-one call to be placed. Whenever information is obtained that is believed to be a possible bomb threat, so the situation can be assessed and appropriate plan of action can be put into place, assisting the public safety personnel. The superintendent consulted the school law council to make sure they took appropriate action as the situation developed and in communication with caregivers in the community to balance the right of the public to know for student rights, privacy rights, and district security needs. The North Hampton Police Department, the Fire Department, State Bomb Squad provided support to the schools. The high school issued stayed in place, JFK issued a lockdown. Ridge Street, Leeds, Jackson Street, Street issued a stay in place. Ryan Road was directed to continue dismissal at the early commence that process. All remaining schools were dismissed when recommended by the police department. We sent communication to the local newspaper and, and school community of that day. So after September fourteenth, the review that district September fourteenth response to incident, the superintendent met with Police Chief Jody Casper, Captain Big Caputo, and Director of Nursing Lisa Safron. In addition, the alt leadership team met together to review the school threat. Each building held a debriefing meeting the next, next morning with staff. Buildings met with students to provide support. Social workers and guidance councils were available to support those in school buildings who had concerns or needed additional support. Please understand that due to privacy laws, we're only able to provide limited information. However, the district leadership took steps to communicate available and appropriate information to the community. The superintendent issued a follow-up message to the school community about the incident. The district administration, including the superintendent, reviewed all communications from caregivers, mates, and other schools and school community with concerns about the incident and the emergency response. The information we receive will be considered as we move forward, with a lot of caregivers send us information and we'll look at our district emergency response protocols and policies. Our next steps, we're reviewing our bomb threat policy, our safety plan, and emergency communication plan. We review and amend our bomb threat and other emergency response policies to the up-to-date. The police department, school attorney, and a special education attorney will evolve in that review process. For our safety plan, we created a crisis team, will be reviewing the ongoing safety plans for district-wide bomb threats. Police department will also provide training to our schools. For a form of communication for emergency, the crisis team was created to support district-wide communications, to support evacuations in collaborations with police and fire departments. We also review protocols for teachers. The teachers would take attendance and stay with schools until released to school, bus, or caregiver. And we'll continue working with the police department for training. What are our daily operations of what in the safety of the buildings? We'll continue partnering with the fire and police, reviewing our protocols and work with them to discuss safety in the buildings. We provide guidance and news messages from the police department, assessing the building, keep buildings locked. To anti-staff, we use a fog. Visitors, visitors, we buzz in, ask to sign in at the office for observations at the district, constantly observing our buildings with surveillance cameras on a regular basis. I just speak to Detective Sergeant Corey Robinson regarding our next steps. So he'll be meeting with our alt team, our leadership team, um supporting training for our teachers and our, and our alt team. The three things about uh the vocabulary I want to talk about, shelter in place means that all students, staff, and visitors remain in the, in the room that are until they are notified that it's safe to move about the building. A lockdown is a procedure used to secure all persons in the building. If there's some threat to safety, teaching stops and individuals get ready to respond. Evacuation occurs when all students and staff are required to leave the building to ensure safety is maintained. When we talk about shelter in place, a shelter in place restricts movement throughout the building. A shelter in place is used for a variety of reasons, for a medical emergency, there's outside disturbance, a wild animal. There's a vague threat not near the school groups, police or fire activity in the neighborhood. We talk about how to shelter in place. The shelter in place means that all students, staff, and visitors remain in the room that are with, the door closed until notified by safe to move throughout the building. Will be a notify shelter in place, please stay in your classrooms. All students, staff, and visitors report to the nearest room as quickly as possible. Doors will be closed, no one be allowed to enter or leave the classroom. All classrooms will continue group discussion, present presentations, and when the emergency has passed, the school will be released by intercom announcement. A lockdown is a procedure used to secure all persons in the building. If there was some threat to safety, a lockdown will be announced via the intercom. It can be initiated by individuals who see a serious threat to safety. All students and staff and visitors report to the nearest room immediately. Doors will be locked and closed. Windows shades will be drawn. All activity in room stops. Adults in charge will take attendance of persons in the room, hold us until administrative law enforcement. We do not allow anyone to enter and leave the room during a lockdown. We do not open for any reason. Officers entered the room with a verbal announcement and key into the room, this is officer, and I am coming into the room. In the event of, of not uniting families, educators are bringing their class to alternative sites. The staff roles would be, staff will be assigned a classroom. One staff will be connected to greet or check caregivers, a family communication guide. We will um send a message to families to let them know where to pick up the child for alternative site. Send message to caregivers, students are released by bus, walkers, or pickups. Caregivers are asked to bring IDs listed on the um Aspen. In addition, accountability, keep attendance of all students. Records keeping is important to connect with students and caregivers and write the name of the person receiving the next information. Most importantly, no matter how minor, even if you're not sure, see something, say something. We want to make sure that we're working together to support North Hampton community, be a friend. If a student needs help, share the information with the school counselor. If there's an unknown visitor, please report to the office. If there's a prop door, please close and report the principal's office, custodian any doors that are propped open. Thank you, and we're looking forward to partnering with the North Hampton Public Schools. So thank you so much.
Thank, thank you, Dr. Pearson Campbell. Okay. Committee, any, uh, member Miller?
Um, thank you, Dr. Pearson Campbell. I had just a couple of specific questions about um the event. Um, I wondered why JFK was in lockdown when the threat took place at North Hampton High School and all this other schools were in uh stand place. But they were in lockdown, and I didn't understand that. And then I also just wondered um, how quickly is it possible to alert the um parents and caretakers? Because we know that the rumor mill starts to go really fast among students um texting or whatever that, I just wonder how quickly is it possible within safe guidelines to alert parents with robocalls as fast as possible? That's just my two questions.
So at that time, the um associate principal, um when we received the, the information there's going to be a bomb threat, um we connected with the um associate principal at the JFK and then they made the decision to do a lockdown, because at that time, we didn't know um where the message was coming from. And so that was done out of precaution. Um, and the reason why the other schools were um either stay in place or dismissal, it depends on what time we received the phone call. Because our dismissal for elementary school was around, around that time. And so um, so either they, either at the time they were dismissing their students or um they had students um outside the playground just in case, and it brought the kids back in. So that's why they did a stay in place from that piece. And for, for parent situation, um the command center, which it was, so is that, um, the police department and the bombs, bomb captains and the fire department will let you know when to say um, to inform the parents. But um, that, that was the reason why. Um, but we know for the next time, we will try to, to hopefully have a, a team captain, because that's what we learned from this um process about having a team captain in place. And that's why I did the evacuation form now, because when I did the review from the police department, they said, please, from now on, have a, have a list of name of the captain, which means the principal of the school or associate principal, and they relay the information back. And so that's what um they mentioned half of the situation.
Thank you.
So it was, it was, it's a, a team process.
Thank you.
Member Gazy?
Okay, thank you. Um, I was wondering two things, if you could share with us who is on the crisis team. Um, and also, I was um, I had heard, I'm not sure if this is true, that there was some confusion at the high school as to whether it was a fire drill or a stay in place or a lockdown. And so I was wondering if there's been um any effort to standardize the messages uh or to make it clear as to which one it is. You know how noisy a classroom can be with air filters and kids talking? So it's sometimes hard to miss the announcements.
Right, um, we created an emergency um communication form plan so that um the building principal can send it up to the classroom teachers via email so that we wouldn't be on the cell phone, so we won't put the cell phone towers. Um, when we first arrived there, we also had a discussion between the police department and the fire department because they had to figure out unravel um what was going on in building. And I can't say everything, because it is also a police investigation, but that's, that's the reason why I'm from that.
Mm-hmm. And how about the crisis team?
The crisis team is made up of building principals, um director of student services, um the director of nursing services. Our police department will also be part of the crisis team because of the new tech, tech of training that is going to go about so that um we can look over our, our um safety plan for that.
Okay, thank you.
Member Levy?
Thanks. Um, thanks to my colleagues. I have a few of the questions I had have already been asked. I also just want to thank you, Dr. Pearson Campbell. I can't imagine it's easy to learn us district safety protocols while in the middle of a crisis. And so I appreciate your um being in it and um, and uh persisting. Um, my first question is, um you had, you uh met with the alt team the day after to talk about the, the incident and what happened. Um, I'm wondering if you can share what the team and you felt went well? And what, I, we've already heard a few areas that need to be improved, but what went well and what needs to be improved?
Well, I would like to acknowledge my administration, because we have so many new people who come in to support um our schools. So what went well is that we all worked together um to communicate um in our buildings and what needs to be supported to understand, like And what needs to be supported to understand like what's a lockdown and what's a stay in place. Um, and also to using our communication form, that document now. So that um messages can go out via email and via also to the intercom, so people can understand it's a, it's a common language. And we have a safety plan, but also to review our safety plan to make sure that it's updated. Um, to make sure, to update because previously was a phone call, but now we have high tech. So either text messaging, global um communication. So those are things that we're working on together to really think about how to, to ensure everyone um is supported. In addition, also working with the police department. Um, so that the police department has some new training and, and that be a point of our partnerships. And so um that's where the alt crisis team has come into place. So that every um from the family engagement person, from the technology, from the busing. And that we all have a plan and also to looking at the alt sites. Because if you think about the number of staff that we hired this year, seventy people or more. That we'll really have to think about ensuring that training is put into place um so that everybody knows their role. And so that's what they did for each building, so they, they brought their staff down to the alternative sites. Um, so they can, each staff know where's the alternative sites, where's the command center, we also talked about walkie-talkies. Um, there's a new type of walkie-talkie that connects to the police. So these are things that we also looking at what we need for our, our supports in the near future, so.
Thanks, and how frequently do you envision having training for staff? If we received some messages from teachers saying that they have been in the district for quite some time and don't recall ever having been trained, so I'm curious how to, how, what that plan will be moving forward.
Well, um, the day after the event, I met with um Chief Jody Casper at Vic Caputo. And also to meeting with um Detective Sergeant, um that's going to help um schedule our times with the buildings. Um, that's one of the things, you know, coming in my seventh week and asking about when do we have these trainings so that we part of the plan. And also too, when we do the budget, the policy and rules. That I would like to update that, so every first day of each year of school year, that'd be part of the communication. So I very looked at the rules and policy for um bomb threats, the rules and policy for emergency plans. And that they need to be updated, so that's part of the process of looking at, um updating the plan. And so that I'm being much more cohesive. So this is something that we've learned and we're moving forward.
Awesome, thank you so much, my last question is about communication, I completely understand and you've said that due to privacy and safety and other considerations, sometimes we're limited in the information that can be shared. I'm curious, um there, there are a number of, of community members who still feel in the dark and, and feel like, well, there's this threat, but hasn't been resolved and feel like there hasn't been communication of, of that sort. And I'm wondering if there's a way in addition to saying, you know, we're reviewing our protocols and we, you know, we're moving forward, if there's a way to give more information to caregivers to understand um as, as much information that can be shared safely and, and with the um other considerations. And I guess I'm wondering if in this case, looking back on it. Might there have been more information that could have been communicated to caregivers? Either in the moment when it happened or afterwards when there was a little bit more resolution?
Well, I, I think during the process, I think um maybe saying a message out, but there is something going on at the high school being reflective for that. But you also understand that this is also a police investigation. And that anytime I send a message out, I, I have to go through my attorney first. And that's why the messages are kind of vague, because um it, it's a police investigation. And once that, once that is done, then I can maybe provide more information, but that's the reason why. So anytime I send a message out, my first thing I do is I contact the attorney. I said, please review over it because else too, I don't want to put us in a, a detriment because it's also that's going on. Um, and that's the reason why, but um we, we can always, I always say we can always be reflective, we can always figure out a way so that we're not in the middle of an investigation.
Yeah, I almost wonder if we could even say, because this is being investigated, I can't share more. Just because most people aren't here on this call and don't necessarily know that, so a way to have transparency and clarity without giving any more information.
Right, I, I, yeah, I can look at my letters again, just make up, I, I did believe I thought I put it in because of a police investigation that I wouldn't be able to give our information. Um, but I know people want more information, but this is what I can do at this point in time. But we always be reflective, I think most importantly, kids would home safe, I know um this was unexpected and I apologize to families, I know this is stressful. Um, but, but at the same time, we're also looking at how do we move forward to make sure that there's training? Because we have new staff coming on, new administration, and so that we can just, every year that has it already in place, so. Thank you.
Okay, member Robbins.
Dr. Pearson Campbell, I thank you so much for all the work that you've clearly just been on since this happened and I can't even imagine being in the first few weeks of your um term and dealing with what we have and what we don't have, so I really appreciate your attention and energy to this. Um, my question is around the kids. So I have grandkids who are in the schools and I've heard from community members too, who heard from their kids about what they thought was happening because they have cell phones and they weren't really helpful in helping to allay their caretakers or parents' concerns. Which were largely, I think, around um stuff that has, is in everybody's minds and everybody's concerns about active shooters. And um I wonder if there's a way to differentiate quickly for people's comfort and sense of mind and for children's sense of peace in a school. Um, to be able to share information that says um I, I don't even know, this is the expert's piece of it, but is able to keep, I think about it as a parent. That, that picture that we have of those parents who grab their kids out of windows, right, when they were held back. And I can imagine every single parent who gets um a notification, who's concerned about what's happening or parents waiting in line to pick their kids up. Or not having their kids come home on the bus, I can't even imagine what goes through their heads and hearts at that time and combo that with what their children with their cell phones are telling them and what we've heard children across the country have texted to their parents and I think it's a huge area that um certainly I'm no expert in, but I'm hoping that we're being cognizant of it. And finding a way to um either reassure kids with cell phones or give them enough information so that their parents are reassured or if it's really a terrible situation to let them know that, I don't know what the fine line is around that, but I want to keep the kids very much in the forefront of not being the last to know about why they're being locked down in a classroom. And I'm sure that's part of the plan that's to come, but I speak on behalf, I think of um need to know in terms of you're like, um, people take action that they, is inappropriate or that they feel is really a critical thing to do. Worst case scenario.
Well, I also think, excuse me, part of the crisis team include from the police department, so we can think about what wording. Um, there's also new training that's coming through the police department, so I think that'd be something part of the team. And we'll have school psychologists, school adjustment counselors on the crisis team. So that we can make sure that we were pretty correct with, because we do not want to have anxiety of the school. Um, but we also have to make sure that we can move in a certain um way, but that's, to me, it's like looking at the plan that we have. And also too, how do we adjust it and how do we bring in people to help to look at our plan, so.
I'm actually talking about in the moment and that's the really hard part, isn't it? It's about how do we communicate with kids and teachers? Teachers say, I don't know what's going on and the kids don't know, but they've got their phones out and they're saying, mom, I see a guy out there with guns. You know, there's lots of cops, there's dogs. And I can't even imagine being a parent in that setting, I can't imagine being a teacher in that setting. Um, but I can imagine it's pretty upsetting for kids and I know we had another incident today. Um, that I was really glad a robocall went out about. Um, but uh I'm hoping that's very much part of the plan as we think forward and I no idea how that's done intelligently and safely and carefully. Um, but I want us to be really cognizant of it and to know that the first thing that kids are going to do is to grab their phones and let their loved ones know that they're concerned, because that's what we've learned from history, isn't it?
Yes.
Okay, member Stein.
Thank you.
Um, excuse me, yeah, I, I'm going to echo a lot of my um colleagues' comments, um, you know, especially around communication and also just really recognizing, I can't imagine what it would have been like to be and you know, new to a district facing this, so um, yeah, I, I it's a really difficult task and I appreciate that you're working through the plan and, and really suggesting some improvements and open to hearing feedback from the community and I, I think that's all great, um, so I, I really appreciate that. Um, I do wonder if maybe, you know, this is sort of an evolving thing that a lot of every district is dealing with, if there are communication consultants or best practices um from national organizations, like I don't know anything about this space. But I'm wondering if the sort of group that's going to be looking at this could search out what other districts are doing that are effective ways to sort of deal with some of these communication issues? Because I, I mean, I don't know what they are, but I would imagine given the focus on this and that every district is you know, faced with it, there is probably some growing body of knowledge on how to best do this. Maybe we can try to access, this is just a suggestion. Um, the other question I had really was about when the last time there was a, a drill or a review in the district of the plan, when the last time the plan was updated? I know you just got here, you may not know, but as you're looking into this, do you have a sense of when the plan was less looked at or when the last time there was a drill or any sort of professional development around this?
And the, the plan was updated in two thousand nineteen, two thousand seventeen. Um, but as to, remember we went through the pandemic, so I think this is just coming back from the pandemic that we taking a stop. Um, but I also want to answer your question about a facilitator, I belong to a, uh, the Connecticut Roundtable. And we did see, receive an email about um a safety plan and facilitator that can help guide your group. So I could reach out to them for that piece, uh, but uh from training pieces, it's, it's, you know, it's probably been a little bit of time since that hat has happened for training. But that's part of the process to of moving forward and that's also part of our policy. So that, that should be part of our policy, giving timelines like when training occurs. So that's one of the things that I've read, um, because I read the policy for emergency plans, I emerged about the bomb threat plans. It talks about a telephone call, but it doesn't give you update about, about, sorry, about um cell phones and multimedia. So I've been reading through all the documents and that's why it's very important that we do have a team here to really look at all of our documents just to make sure they're up to date. Um, you know, although this is my second, you know, the second week of school starts. But um one of the things that we did do was just look at the timeline and, and we have a team of people that, that we can support and ask that around those questions. So um that's why the evacuation communication form is designed. We're looking at our Aspen to make sure, because they only allow for two contacts. So when you, when you enroll your kids, you only can see two lines for contacts. So we're trying to increase it to four, because just in case a caregiver is, is at work. Maybe the first two may not, not available, but the other two may have to be on the Aspen. So I'm working with Rebecca, Rebecca Nathan to look at our Edwin. I'm Edwin, our Aspen, to make sure um that we have more contact slots for people. So those, those are things that you really have to look at um from that piece, so. Um, it's coming, um, and, and it's, it's just something that we have to look at.
Yeah, no, and I, I appreciate that you're going through it um and, and making these adjustments and I, I'm grateful for that. You know, one of the things that was um, I think, difficult, at least in my experience at the elementary school was sort of like a mid dismissal uh shelter in place or something was called, so you had like half the students were dismissed and then there's a lot of parents outside not knowing why their students are being dismissed and like not even being told by anyone that there's a shelter, you know, it's like this very strange scene, you don't know. Is it like a, is it for privacy, was there an accident, you, you have no idea what's happening? And it was that sort of anxiety that um member Robbins was talking about was, was clearly on display there, so. You know, the, it just hit at a really weird time and it seemed like no one knew what to do um i- in terms of notifying anyone at school. Um, so yeah, I'm grateful you're looking at all this, if the school committee can be of any help, please let us know, thank you.
And that's where we did the emergency communication form, so we can do it, sit it all at one time. Uh, instead of, instead of just saying calling each one, we can just do an email or conversation saying, please look at this. Um, because so that we all be uniform. So, yeah.
Thank you, okay, member Gazy.
Um, yeah, I remember that last spring after the um, I believe it was the Uvalde school shooting, um, the school committee and the superintendent got emails from at least one student who said she was very freaked out that there had been no practice. And why not on lockdowns and other procedures like we used to do? And uh, Dr. Provost replied that that's because there'd been COVID prac, protocols and uh we didn't want to huddle around together. So I'm glad that there is, that this incident was resolved without injury. Um, and that it showed us where our gaps are in our safety plan and we're moving to correct those, so thank you, I'm, I'm relieved that this has happened and we're acting on it.
Thank you, member Agna.
I just want to echo my thanks to, also to you, Dr. Pearson Campbell, for having to do so many things that you've had to do on this, on the fly in this period of time as you are settling in and post pandemic as well. Because I know that the drills weren't happening during that time, kids weren't even in school. And then last year, when there was a concern about having kids together, as member Gazy said. They weren't able to restart the um drills and I, I had participated in many um trainings and drills as a principal. And the district has been pretty vigilant about keeping current and doing best practices. And we're guided by the North Hampton Police Department who are I think very astute and very current in their best practices around uh safety in schools. And I think that if, since uh Police Chief Casper has been very involved with this, this, this will happen again, there will be the tabletop lockdown drills and all that. Um, and I know that during the drills even, let alone a real, a lockdown that we actually had one time. We can't, there isn't any information that can be shared. Because there's a lot of concern about who might be listening and where situations might be in the schools and it's terrifying, it's absolutely terrifying. I think that the main thing that we need to support administrators in doing is the post, the debrief with the students afterwards. And that's what we would do a lot of in our school was talk about how horrible it was and how scary it was and how now safe that we are. And there are going to be some times that I think we can't prevent that and that's the harri- horrible truth about being a student in schools right now. We're not going to be able to keep them from being terrified and that's, that's a, I, I mean, I, I feel awful saying that. But I do see the role of administrators and teachers and families in being able to support students afterwards and talk it through and have good debriefing and maybe writing some social stories and doing all kinds of work together to hopefully mitigate some of that trauma and be able to move on and the, the I think that the um person who wrote the letter to the editor after the front page article about all the safety features of the new K to eight school in East Hampton, who said it's really unfortunate that we had to think about a school, a, a feature of the school that is portrayed as very positive is that it has automatically closing doors and all of the features that prevent a school shooter or an intruder to come in, has to be the thing that we really publicize rather than what great programs the schools have. Um, but that is the reality now and um I, I think we would all be, um, we would recognize that our responsibility is working with the police department to do this kind of best practice training. And I, I know that that's going to be part of what's happening and I just think I'm really supportive of you, Dr. Pearson Campbell, and trying to lead a district now post pandemic and all the things that you're having to do, so I just want to thank you very much for that.
Thank you, member. Thank you, member Miller.
This is just a comment or suggestion about, as member Agna said, debriefing, which would only be that since I know that the students do go through drills regarding, you know, lockdown and stay in place, that they maybe be given some direction about during drills about what they should do or not do with cell phones, et cetera. And maybe it would be helpful to them to understand things like, why are all the lights turned off? Just things that they might need to understand that they might not actually understand. That's just a suggestion for future, not about any past mistakes or anything like that. I think you've done an amazing job coming into this position and having to review all of the solves sudden. So that's just a thought and that during the drills, they might be done, given that. And also that I appreciate what member Agna said about the debriefing that happened in her school. But I want to make sure that happens with adjustment counselors leading debriefing sessions in all the schools. Because I think that's essential. Thank you. And again, I also appreciate everything you've done so far.
Thank you.
Thank you, member Sarah F Cox.
Yeah, I have a school, a kid who was in school that day. And I just, I think the, the primary emotion that, that I have and had at that time was, I guess, gratitude for, for, that I knew that there were adults in, in those situations who were looking out for my kid and, and the kid in the district. And I, that of course is administrators and yourself, Dr. Pearson Campbell, but also every single teacher and every single paraprofessional and, and custodian. And, you know, all of the folks who, who are working in the offices and working in the classrooms as well. So, you know, you have, you have an amazing team around you, both in the alt team and in your, no, your staff. So I, I am grateful that, that we had it without incident. And, and I'm always grateful for debrief and for thinking about how to do things better. But just grateful for the, for the people who were there with, with the students of Northampton that day. So thank you.
We do have a great team. And I, and even my, I call it my main floor of my office. We all work together. And I just want to say that we have such great people that work together, who've been here for years, who knew the institutional knowledge that maybe I didn't know. And we all worked on together on behalf of that day. So I didn't do it by myself. It was a great team and people have stepped up and I want to acknowledge it, the high school. Although they maybe didn't have a principal, we have associate principals who stepped up and director of student services, I call it the Red Cross team. So the Red Cross team came in, was the guidance counselors, everyone came in support. So we all, this is a difficult year, but at the same time, we're all working together on behalf of kids. So I want to make sure I acknowledge everyone in our community and our parents and our students and our caregivers and everyone. So just wanted to.
Okay, thank you, thank you. And I'll just echo the gratitude. And also just share that I'm, I'm very grateful of, that you are working closely with NPD and fire rescue. And I know that they're very grateful for all, you know, all of the, the time that you've worked on in the last week and, and that the plans and the access that you are giving them to allow them to do the training that they need and for all the drills to have happen that need to be sort of back into our usual routine. So thank you so much for working closely with them. They're, they and I are very grateful. So if there's no further comments on this update and I see none, we will move into executive session. We will not be coming back into open session. We'll be adjourning from executive session. Would someone like to make a motion, please?
I'll move to make a move to executive session. Make a motion to move to executive session.
Second.
I, I can read, I can read it if you don't have it in front of you.
That's great.
Member Casey. Request to enter executive session under Massachusetts General Law Open Meeting, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty one A two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. And the chair so declares.
And most of the main seconded and the chair does so declare. So we, again, will be moving into executive session. We say good evening to everybody. We will not be coming back into open session. So everyone else who is here, we're going to say good night. And
Member Gazy.
Yes.
Member Sarah F Cox.
Yes.
Member Stein.
Yes.
Member Levy.
Yes.
Member Miller.
Yes.
And member Agna.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mayor Shara.
Yes.
And member Robbins.
Yes.
Okay, let me. Leila is going to be.
Recording stopped.
Calling in.